I'd like to call up order the June 22nd, 2023 regular meeting of the Nickelburg District Board of Trustees. Please stand and wait.
This is the United States of America. The United Republic of America stands for our mission under God and in this law.
Bridgette, can we get it all, please?
President Gibson?
Yeah.
President Orpyn here. Commissioner Anseer?
Here.
Commissioner Jacks?
Here.
Commissioner Janer?
Here.
Commissioner Rizal?
Here.
Commissioner Thompson?
Here.
Thank you. Do you have any management comments?
Oh, we do. April Foreman?
Alright, good evening. My name is April Foreman, and I am the Communications Director for the Church of Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints in the Naperville area. I represent the Conquer nations in our area. Thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. I'm here to discuss the Giving Machine Initiative. I like the basics, so let's go through the what, when, where, how, person, pictures. So if you want to get the last things down, I don't know what I'm talking about. And the pictures we have are pictures of our giving machines. What is a giving machine? Each November or December, our church presents the Light the World Initiative. That was a more recent result around serving others. The giving machines are part of this campaign, and they're a vending machine but with a twist. It bends charitable donations and provides an easy way to perform an instant active service. We have a variety of international and local charities that participate in each area. The placards, the machine range and price. When? They're coming to our area from November 29th to December 10th. Where? These machines are located all over the world. A patron, and this will be the first placement in the Chicago River area. We're approaching Naperville. These machines have been in Washington, Washington DC, Nashville, Kansas City, and even Times Square. How do work? A patron approaches, they use a credit card, electronic payment, there's no cash transaction, and the placard drives to the bottom. It is, and that's where it stings. A patron is, gets an electronic receipt, and it's a visual representation of giving without receiving. Do the giving machines have an impact? Last year, patrons donated $6.2 million during the 2022 Christmas season, making the total close to $22 million since the initiative started in 2017. Charities receive 100% of the donations, even the credit card fees and all other fees are covered. The giving machines have also generated heavy media coverage. We expect it to, media coverage should be no different in the Chicago River market with these unique devices, and they will draw a significant amount of attention. How will this benefit you? How would it benefit the host sites? These machines have a proven record of drawing large numbers of people from a broad area who want to participate in a good cause. They also learn good though. We are continuing to look for placement, and I would urge you in your spirit to help us endeavor to aid those in our community. Thank you for your time. Are there any questions?
Yeah, I was just wondering, I was looking on the, what are the specific charities? Is there a list of charities that we could see that you could print out so we know specifically where the monies would be going?
We would, and we are in negotiations currently. I'm not ready to discuss all of them yet. I can tell you typically there's two global charities and four local, and one placement we always expect to, in my service area, is the western suburbs. So all the charities in the negotiations are the western suburbs and we'll be moving to Page County.
Okay, great, thank you. Any other questions?
Thank you, Ms. Foreman. Her possible staff, and I'll be back here shortly. But thank you for coming to discuss tonight. Next, we have the annual comprehensive financial report.
Move to accept the comprehensive financial report.
Hi, good evening. I'll just leave this. So with us tonight is Brian Bieber. He is our partner from Siget LLP, and he is going to present just a quick presentation of our 2022 what. I'll turn the page over to Brian.
Thanks, Sue. We have those signatures. I'd like to thank the president and the board for inviting us to present some brief comments on the report resulting from the district's audit period here, the December 31st, 2022. The report that comes out as a result of that is the annual comprehensive financial report, and this report includes three sections: an introductory section, a financial section, and a statistical section. The financial section is what meets the requirements for an audit under Illinois' pilot statutes. What makes the comprehensive report is the introductory and statistical section. Within the report itself, in the introductory section, there's an award that the district received for its 2021 annual comprehensive financial report. It's from the Government Finance Association, the Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting, and this is the highest level of financial reporting within the local government industry, and the district has been receiving this award each and every year since 1991. So should I be proud of that? And in order to receive that certificate, you also need to receive a certain kind of opinion on your audit, and in the financial section, you've received an unmodified opinion, and what that means is that the financial statements are presented in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles free of material state. So that's that highest level of opinion that you can receive on your financial statements. In order to receive that opinion, we're required to follow two sets of standards: the audit standards that come from the AICPA that tells us the types of procedures we need to perform when conducting our audit, and then the second set of standards are the financial reporting standards that come from GASB, the governmental accounting standard form, and GASB sets the rules for financial statements for local governments such as the district. Within the report itself, if you don't have a chance to review the entire report, I would encourage you to read the management discussion and analysis. This is the executive summary of the report. It's required by GASB. The district prepares it. It's the one place in the financial statements that you get to give explanations for the changes in your financial statements from 2021 to 2022. It's a very good document. This document is also a really good document to show your constituents that might be interested in the financial information of the district. This really tells the story of your financial position. Within the financial statements themselves, you'll note that on your governmental fund financial statements, previously your capital projects fund was a component of your general fund during the year it was split out to be its own separate fund. So you'll see the results from the transfer at the end of the year over to capital and see that $16.6 million amount now in fund balance. All of your other fund balances are consistent with the district's fund balance policy. The last thing to bring to your attention is the results from IRRF as a result of the actual evaluation. So each and every year, you put in the employer rates that's determined by the actual that IRRF for the park district itself based on the individuals in that, in the plan for the district. The budgetary impact this year was $689,000. It was from at 7.27% of cover payroll, down from 8.81% in the prior year. So good news in terms of that budgetary impact and that percentage going down. It's one of the most well-funded plans in the country because there's a statutory provision that each and every local government has to put in their fair share. What you'll also find in that required supplementary information section is the results then for 2022. The results in terms of comparing the assets held by IRRF divided by those liabilities. Those assets are at market value, and what happened in 2022, our markets went down, correct? So we would expect the funding ratio to go down. At 2021, we were at 113% funded, so overfunded, so down to 91% funded. But then, that's why it's a long-term pension plan. One bad year in the markets is not going to significantly impact your rates because the investment returns are still a bit over 500 per year, so it's really down to 5% of that calculation. So really, all good news there. Those are what I consider to be the highlights of the report. In conclusion, the audit went smoothly and on time. The draft of the report was ready for the district in March, and the final's already in April. We just have to wait until IRRF actually finalizes their audit report and their testing because we rely on that for the actual information that's in your reports. The district's staff is very professional and easy to work with. We have it answered any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Bieber. Does it bring any questions? Thank you for coming to speak with us tonight.
Thank you very much. Joy, Lord, with you all.
So I see a roll call to accept the report.
President Orpyn?
Yes.
Commissioner Thompson?
Yes.
Commissioner Anseer?
Yes.
Commissioner Jacks?
Yes.
Commissioner Janer?
Yes.
Commissioner Rizal?
Yes.
President Gibson?
Yes.
Bridgette, can you please read the consent agenda?
Item 4.1, approve the appointments of Leslie Orpyn and Chris Jacks to the Finance Committee, Vice President Orpyn to the Interim Chair Side Committee. 4.2, approve the appointments of Allison Thompson and John Rizal to the Legislative Committee, Commissioner Thompson to the Interim Chair Side Committee. 4.3, approve the appointments of Ronnie Anseer, Rich Janer, and Allison Orpyn to the Parks and Recreation Committee, Commissioner Anseer to the Interim Chair Side Committee. 4.4, approve the appointment of Mayor Gibson to the Riverwalk Commission. 4.5, approve May 23 dispersments made through the banking method purchasing card program in an amount of $327,570.53. 4.1, 4.6, approve May 23 fintech dispersments in the amount of $5,425.55. 4.7, approve May 25, 20.3, executive session closed meeting minutes. 4.8, approve June 8, 2023 regular meeting minutes. 4.9, approve to find that supply chain issues have made the procurement transportation vehicles no longer capable to contend for bidding, and red fine approve the action of Executive Director in Purchasing 1, 2023 Ford F-350 SRD new service trucks from Lowerport for $69,857.26. 4.10, move to reject the one they received from American Steel Co. of Indiana Inc. in May 2023, and to award the contract for the Ashbury Park Tennis Sports Resurfacing Project to Sports Service Partners LLC in an amount of $40,897.50. And that's all.
Thank you, Bridgette. Are there any items for your consent agenda?
Move to accept consent agenda items 4.1 through 4.10.
Second. Roll call, please.
President Orpyn?
Yes.
Commissioner Thompson?
Yes.
Commissioner Anseer?
Yes.
Commissioner Jacks?
Yes.
Commissioner Janer?
Yes.
Commissioner Rizal?
Yes.
President Gibson?
Yes.
Move to approve consent agenda items 4.1 through 4.10.
Second. Roll call on the table.
Aye.
Great. You don't want to push to business, continue business. We're doing our maintenance agreement with the city of Naperville.
Alright, so good evening. Included in the June 16th weekly packet was a memo regarding the Riverwalk Maintenance Agreement with the city of Naperville and a draft of the sixth amendment to the current agreement. After sharing updates with the Parks and Recreation Committee at the June 8th, 2023 meeting, staff desired to present a copy for discussion this evening and answer any questions or receive feedback that the full board might have to offer concerning the draft. As reference in the memo, the city and the park district have been adhering to terms set forth in the 2003 maintenance agreement, updated in the 2009 agreement, and renewed via series of amendments every five years since, with the most recent amendment set to expire on December 31st. The park district was made responsible for all the maintenance on the Riverwalk with financial assistance from the city. The city's contribution was based on the city paying for all the maintenance costs east of Washington Street and any additional costs that resulted from new additions to the Riverwalk. Park staff utilizes a work order management system to record labor and material costs and collaborates with the finance department to tabulate all costs associated with maintaining the Riverwalk throughout the year. Since the 2003 agreement has been in place, city financial contributions were provided for the upcoming five-year period, with updates to those values only occurring via amendments to compensate for additional operations costs stemming from new improvements added to the Riverwalk. During the final years of the current agreement, maintenance costs have increased at a much higher rate than the city's pre-encountered reimbursement contribution value, resulting in the park district absorbing entirety of the amount. A key change to this agreement would look to determine the city's reimbursement commitment annually at mutually agreed upon date rather than using the current method of projecting costs five years out from the time the agreement was initiated. A review of historical data revealed that the city has been paying for approximately 21% of the total costs for maintenance of the Riverwalk from year to year. To compensate for the overall cost increase experienced during the last couple of years, a jump in that contribution will be sought moving forward as compared to the previous commitments provided in the current agreement. This increase in the city's financial share amount is intended to realign the city contribution with the percentage of overall maintenance costs the city has historically paid. Both the city and the park district share an interest in implementing a true-up mechanism in this agreement. The year-end true-up would allow for any yearly savings or additional costs in relation to that year's listed city contribution to be reconciled with the city. This would occur long after the city issued its annual contribution payment, which typically occurs in the spring of the year intended to cover. With several projects planned in the coming years as part of the Riverwalk 2031 master plan, the annual true-up payment would also assist with capturing financial obligations relating to the maintenance of improvements that were completed at any point throughout the year. Finally, the last change would involve the implementation of an automatic renewal term of the agreement at set intervals. The upcoming agreement seeks to extend the term for five fiscal years, beginning January 1st, 2024 through December 31st, 2028. At the conclusion of the 2026 fiscal year, and each year thereafter, one additional year will automatically be added so that as of each January 1st, the agreement essentially becomes a three-year, a more than three-year term. Either party will have the ability to prevent the automatic extension if so desired. As mentioned in the memo, we're still in the process of gathering feedback from the city staff. We anticipate that the sixth amendment to the intergovernmental agreement at lease between the city of Naperville and the Naperville Park District for the Naperville Riverwalk will be presented to the board for approval later this summer. That was a whole big mouthful, but I think that regardless of any questions you might have regarding the agreement.
Question, Mr. DeGraw, and any questions?
Yeah, except one is only in the draft, but with, and Paranide Contras was not my best reading mouthful. It says under the provisions, the city's responsible for any costs in excess of $10,000 returned in the last two years, and then those to apply these request. So would the city be responsible for any repairs over $10,000 in areas where the park district would otherwise be responsible?
Also, those are more related to the capital improvement costs, so those would be the larger scale problems.
Question, why is there a division on Washington Street this far?
So we got a great historical lesson from some of our current parts with the city. We've been involved with this for a long time. Up until a certain point, the park district had to bear most of the, all of the costs associated with maintaining the Riverwalk. When they added the improvements east of Washington Street and came to the park district and said, hey, you know, we'd like you guys to maintain this, at a certain point, we said, we just, we can't keep incurring all the additional costs to maintain the Riverwalk on our own. So, you know, there was a bunch of back and forth agreements and discussions, and they became internal of how they wanted to be those costs up.
The historical incident was the famous Conical stop shop. It's right to the southeast of the ridge in Washington. There was a derelict building there for a long time. The city finally acquired it and for, had any other purpose, it wasn't developed, it wasn't built a lot, so they just took over the park system, and then they acquired the old Pat Rock and Free Creek Park in the side of the Riverwalk. And in the great tradition of the Hobbs, the ponds of Hobbs and West, where they looked to stop development in some way, they tried to throw it to the park district. Well, there had to be an end to that. So while they were happy to include it in the Riverwalk and do all that, they came up with one and we said, you go keep building whatever you want to build on the east side and sending it to hedge development as you wish, city, but you're going to have to maintain these. We'll do the work, you have to pay.
What is the western boundary then?
We, the western boundary of the Riverwalk extends around, wraps around to Jefferson Street near Fireman's Memorial Park, so just a little bit beyond the Grand Pavilion area, and then we've got the Pacific Woods area over there that's included in section one.
So that's the western boundary?
Yep.
And the Carol Ann is similarly carved out, although it's down there. That was the whole city's idea, so.
Any questions? If you have an idea suddenly with, you know, these things in the 2031 broadcast plan, like the year-over-year.
We thought that would be the most fair way to approach things moving forward, and both sides would benefit if we came in over budget or under budget. There was a way just to make sure both sides were holding.
Sure. That'd be great, okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. The Naperville Park District posted a public open house event for the district-wide guidance for its master plan on April 27th at the Fort Hill Activity Center here, 4:30 to 6:00 p.m. following open house and online commentary result April 28th through May 12th. SAP received a total of three comment sheets at the open house and one email correspondence. The input received would be considered by SAP conforming landing capital improvement plans and indoor space needs assessments, including acquires for future review and discussion with park board. The master plan is in the last remaining stages of development, and a final draft version of the document is planned to be submitted via digital format to park board for review and comment in late June, early July. Following the final review phase, the documents will be updated as needed for the input received and presented for formal approval at upcoming park board meetings. So just an update on the master plan.
Any questions? Great, thanks. Since any of you have some technical frustrations?
A contract for this project is planned to be presented to the park board for approval in July or August. The chemical pit at Sentinel Beach was located at the northeast corner of the property near the administration building. This room houses cool chemicals and other sides that are circulated to the beach. Beginning 2020, SAP noticed sections of the concrete ceiling that were deteriorating. As a result, SAP contacted the general contractors in multiple phases since then to perform concrete patching. However, as the contractors progressed in each phase, SAP determined that more patching was needed throughout the space. The scope of work for this project includes removal of remaining deteriorated concrete and patching walls, beams, and floors needed, application of erosion-resistant coating throughout the space, replacement of corroded concrete support, and fastening hardware. Pending contract approval, work is planned to occur from the fall when the Sentinel Beach coal is received, with the intent to resubstantiate completion by the end of this year.
Thank you. Bridgette Park, best of all, for the renovation.
A contract for this project is anticipated to be presented to the park board for approval next month. For both basketball courts, the scope of work consists of removing and replacing the asphalt surface color coating, striping, basketball goals, and site furniture. Pending contract approval, the project work is slated to commence in summer with the goal to resubstantiate completion in fall.
Bridgette, she's excited to have a question. Do you know how long it'll take? How often are we re-surfacing?
Our goal is, I don't know, I think this one's about 15 years. Our goal is about every year, every 15 years to renovate our basketball courts. However, that's also based on our staff conducting site inspections. So if you see cracks, if anything, you put it in the schedule, they'll do it a year or a bulk of years ahead, or if they can push it out of the schedule and say that capital investment for future years, they'll do that. I have to go back and look, but from my understanding, it's about 15 years since we last renovated those basketball courts.
Do we ever patch them, or do we always just add?
Absolutely. So we patch about every three to five years and color coat and stripe, and that's part of our regular maintenance plan.
Okay, great. Any other questions? Alright, Press Creek Park, you drew some license.
So this one was included in the June 16th weekly packet when planning for the 2023 Press Creek Park Basketball Court Innovation Project. SAP noticed soils on the park district's edge of the property line shared with the Press Creek Country Club. SAP informed representatives of the Country Club of the material stamps on the park district property. At this time, the Country Club's SAP are in the process of removing the material along the edge of Press Creek Park property. In addition, SAP identified that a small portion of the Press Creek Country Club's maintenance yard fence wraps around the northwest corner point of Press Creek Park property. Considering the small portion of Press Creek Park property within the fenced area, and since there are no impacts in operations, programs, and recreational amenities offered at the park because of this very minor encroachment, representatives of Press Creek Country Club are requesting an encroachment license between the Naperville Park District and Press Creek Country Club, which will allow the fence to maintain the place until the end of the seasonal life. Or anytime the fence represents a safety issue, then at such time, the fence will be removed from the Press Creek property, Press Creek property by the Press Creek Country Club at its expense. If there's an interest by the park board this evening to support this request, the intent is to present an encroachment license for your consideration approval until July 13th.
Boy, how do you define a, it's a small area, is it feet?
Yeah, yeah, it's actually a few feet included in the weekly packet. What was really nice, we had not only an aerial image, but a photograph that showed, like basically, here's the lines, and essentially it was a few feet over, and then you could see the maintenance fence going around it. Since it's very minor, the concern that we have with the district is just liability if they're working on property that's owned by the park district. So once we identified the encroachment, we worked with legal counsel, Dr. Price, formulated the encroachment license, and then presented to the board tonight for consideration. And then we'll have the final document for consideration July 13th. If there's an interest by the board to proceed to see anything, so we just want to present the top.
We're talking about the safety of the fence. Are we doing inspections? How are we determining when is not, no longer safe?
Yeah, so our staff. Yeah, no, that's a very good question. Our staff, they conduct regular audits and inspections of Press Creek Park as they do with the playground. They have this through a list, they look at the fence, they find any times it's in an unsafe condition, they will report out to the Press Creek Country Club staff and ask them to remove it. And in that case, we would definitely notify you as a board, we got that.
If liability is a concern for me, up the liability amount, there's a clause in here, it's a separate, for $500,000 liability cover, so it's like nothing for serious nature injury. Like a fence falls on somebody, there is a leg.
Absolutely. I think in some cases, we go up to a million dollars.
Well, yeah.
Yeah, so we can doubt it in the first.
I just have a question about, since speaking about soil, there's work there, so with this encroachment, will they still be doing that, or are things?
No. Absolutely not. Yeah, so that was the first step. When we first identified the issue for the soil, you probably know it's the pictures in the weekly packet, it was quite substantial. They have been aggressively removing that. They know that they were, you know, over the years, it's kept dumping along the property line, and so maybe 10, 20 years down the road, it just kind of got onto the Naperville Park and Press Creek property. So they're in the process of removing it. We have plans to meet them on site next week, and we want to make sure that this is done first, and it's done well, and then the consideration encroachment license. But it looks like everything is moving forward in the right direction, so we want to be ready and present this to the board for consideration right now.
The Parks and Recreation Committee took a first look at this, and if I remember correctly, the committee was supportive of our moving forward of the NMI.
Does anybody have any concerns on this? Okay, very important, next meeting. Okay, very important, next meeting.
The only concern I have is the level of liability, otherwise it's.
All right, thank you very much.
Next, Heritage Place, Art and Construction.
So the Heritage Place subdivision was approved by the city of Naperville in twenty twenty-one. As part of the proposal, Heritage Place will donate two parts of the land to the Naperville Park District for Heritage Place Park, a similar location of the former Palms Park, a property owned by little friends sold from the Heritage Place subdivision. To memorialize the donation terms, the Park District entered a land cacher agreement with Heritage Place subdivision developer in twenty twenty-one. With this agreement in place, the Park District proceeded replacing a order for playground equipment as authorized at the May twelfth, twenty twenty-two Park Board meeting, based on input received from area residents in order to secure competitive pricing and expedite delivery time terms. For the land cacher agreement, the May Park will be improved as part of the first phase of development by Heritage Place subdivision developer. Since the May Park area is ready for installation of the planned park improvements, is recommended to begin to construct the playground prior to conveyance of the future partner. Uh, this will be covered through a temporary construction event known as a T C E, similar to the process filed for construction of Naperville Commons Park, prior to conveyance to ensure park and recreational amenities are available for use as soon as possible. Park District staff met with developer on site this last Tuesday, confirmed that the project's schedule would be set for this fall, where the site is ready for the Park District and their contractor to begin construction of the playground developed at the May Park, uh, as well as terms and conditions of the T C, which is pretty much set what we worked through as a Park District Naperville Commons Park project. The T C in contract for construction of the playground project at the May Park will be presented at a future meeting. At this time, we're thinking about presenting to board for consideration at the meeting next month, post July thirteen. So not only would we have the T C, we may even have the construction contract to build the playground, so removing all the playground.
So that's in the hour one hundred thirty-eight?
Yes, it is, yeah. Moving along.
Great. All right, thank you. Next, is that our field number seven?
A contract for this project is anticipated to be presented to the Park Board for approval in July. The scope of work consists of removal of existing ball field backstop line fencing and replacement of the new chain link fencing and backstop bedding system. The taller backstop bedding system ridens air balls from reaching the faces, sidewalks, and streets. Pending contract approval, the project work is slated to commence in summer with the goal to reach substantial completion in fall.
Thank you. Knott Hills Park Ridge renovation.
A contract for the Knott Hills Park Ridge renovation project at the Frank Russ Preserve is anticipated to be presented to the Park Board for approval in July. The scope of work consists of renovation of existing pedestrian bridge, as part of the Frank Russ Preserve property, including welded insulation steel rails, removal of existing wind ducting and replacement of new ducting. Pending contract approval, the project work is slated to commence in the summer with the goal to reach substantial completion this fall.
All right, thank you. Winding Creek, Park Request for basketball courts.
So this one was relayed at the June eighth, twenty twenty-three Parks and Recreation meeting. SAP received a request for residents to construct basketball courts at Winding Creek Park to system evaluating this request, copies of the email press, supporting materials submitted with letters to support Naperville Park District park and recreational amenities by Park Type Chart. Draft service area maps and concept led diagrams were included in the June sixteen, twenty twenty-three weekly packet for review. In order to effectively and efficiently evaluate requests for new amenities, the Park District utilizes a capital projects policy. The policy works in conjunction with the Park District's mission, vision, core values, and master plan to ensure proposed improvements are aligned with community needs and available resources. Winding Creek Park is classified as a community park, and a basketball court is permitted use for the master plan's park and recreational amenities guidelines. Additional items for considerations part of this request include the park site's current conditions, so, several examples would be slopes, drainage, existing easements, maintenance obligations, cold requirements, confirmation that service areas for requested amenities and proposed location are, are not being served based on the master plan. In this case, there is a gap in service with the other basketball courts in the area based on the master plan, existing programming and possible impacts proximity to residential properties, further stack analysis, as well as, as we're working on and in the process and as we presented to Parks and Recreation meeting on June eighth, but also tonight, presenting to the board, and ultimately making sure it's in line with our budget, our capital budget. It is important that there are, that there is consensus and support within the neighborhood, particularly for neighbors and community adjacent to the park, for the request of recreational amenities in order for it to be successful to be implemented. So anytime we receive a request of residence for new recreational amenities, we ask homeowners to reach out to the H O As, to make sure that there is support for that amendment. Uh, at this time, we want to open this up for any discussion, and if there's support by the Park Board to further consider this request. Uh, if there is any interest to further consider the request to possibly place basketball courts at Winding Creek Park, in this case, we recommend one basketball court based on the space available. Uh, SAP recommends, including this request, this proposal, a new basketball court amendment at Winding Creek Park as part of our upcoming online twenty twenty-four capital projects open house, uh, which is planned to kick off next month. So a little bit of background, just want to gather your input on this request from the community to add a basketball court at Winding Creek Park.
Yeah, they've still, the H O A is backed, pulls support of it, and then secondly, we're doing additional work at that location, right? So we would basically go on this project and do the work that we already have planned from.
Absolutely. So in twenty twenty-four, we have plans to renovate the playground. So we already have this on the docket to gather community input as part of our online open house project next month. So if we can add the playground renovation with this, you know, proposal for new basketball court, we see there's some interest, and really reach out to, you know, the residents in the community who are sensitive to doing outreach process, to make sure that everyone's aware of it and in fact, they do support it.
I personally love how quickly the staff has responded to the surplus. It's not often like people don't see the behind the scenes that we can hear us like this and be like, yes, this is something you could possibly do, let us look into it immediately for you. So I just want to say thank you to everybody who's been working on this, because it really does show that you guys are listening to the residents and everything. So I think it's really good that we have a lot of community support, and I just appreciate that you guys responded so quickly to the request as well.
Thank you.
Well, I have to present, I was gonna say the same thing, like, I'm impressed how quickly the staff, stuff's been, but I'm sorry. It's great.
Thank you very much.
Uh, Dr. Schutz, with unique from us tonight, just consensus that we want to move forward discussing this?
Yes, if there's an interest by the board to proceed, we'll add in this to our twenty twenty-four open house, um, as, as Commissioner Danner mentioned, we'll add it with the playground renovation, and then we'll report back to input we receive and then go over there.
Ready on board?
Thank you. That's it.
Thank you. All right, that could be back on body camera agreement.
Good evening, I'd like to bring you up to the date, uh, our efforts to obtain an equipped officer in the Park District Police with body worn cameras. January twenty twenty-one, government puts first sign of only safety, accountability, fairness, and equity today act, otherwise known as the Safety Act, into law. Included in the legislation is the mandatory implementation of body camera program for all law enforcement agencies. Further requirements, the Naperville Park Police must implement, implement the use of body cameras no later than January first of two thousand twenty-five. In comparison, the city of Naperville Police mandated to incorporate their program and get it up and running by January first of twenty twenty-three. As part of the staff's research in the body worn camera program, we solicited, quote, Exxon Enterprise appropriate. The city of Naperville entered into a contract with Exxon for their police department's body camera program, which was implemented in the summer of twenty twenty-two. Advantages of using the Exxon Enterprise body worn camera utilized by the Naperville Police Department include consistency with the equipment and operation of the cameras between the two departments, and administrative access to real-time camera footage during critical incident that the Park District Police officers could very well be eliciting the state police officers quit. The Naperville Police Department also drafted a general order governing the use of the body cameras, which could be utilized by the Park Police as well. The quote received from Exxon is part of the Sourcewell Cooperative Purchasing Program, which the Park District participates in to receive competitively bid pricing. The quote includes all camera equipment licensing, implementation, and data storage for tech cameras. In addition, the quote includes updated tasers, which all Park Police officers carry when under. Annual cost is just over twenty-six thousand dollars per year for three years after the initial purchase of the equipment. Park District is seeking grant assistance to offset some of the costs associated with the implementation of this program. We are currently waiting to receive an update on a federal grant that would reimburse the district up to twenty thousand dollars over three years. There are also grant opportunities through the state that we will pursue to assist with offsetting costs. The timing for lending Exxon agreement will be brought to the board for consideration is somewhat dependent on the available grants. The federal grant does not allow the district to approve an agreement prior to the grant award. We had hoped to hear from this particular grant by April. They last told us we should hear by the end of this month, so we're awaiting an hearing at office. The purposes, the purpose of today's update was to introduce the topic to the board in preparation for submitting agreement for the purpose of body worn cameras and tasers at an upcoming meeting. Any questions?
Dan, is it for you with us? Next, we have department updates, start with the administration.
I just have one of the annals will further down the road. It's the Legally Parade that takes place September fourth, and then I have J C's and you can actually look at the last one. And I just, I'll be sending out invitations soon to put out in the calendar. I just need to register a couple of weeks in advance, so just look for that invitation, and if you haven't purchased, the parade of us is, uh, everyone's more than married, mainly kids, puppies.
Awesome. Thanks, Bridget. Next, we have finance.
Good evening again. Um, if I could just circle back quickly to the annual audit, I would be remiss if I did not, um, give a big recognition to Jeremy Link, our county manager, and his team. Um, didn't say enough, he had, again, for another year, zero audit adjustments, which is very rare, uh, very clean audit. Um, as Brianly mentioned, it was done early, and I always like to think, and finance, you know, we're not out facing a lot, but when you get a clean audit like that, and you have no audit adjustments, it needs a whole entire year of accounting that's accurate and timely, and really, I should give a thanking to all of us at the district, because everyone tries really hard to put things where they belong on invoices, and it all really adds up to a good audit. But Jeremy really has the audit, he's in charge of it, and again, he's done an excellent job, and I was remiss, I did not say anything initially, um, to thank him for all that work and recognition. So last day period, we hit our high on checks issued, we were up to eight hundred, um, and that was, might not be our peak, I think we still might be adding some more on, but, um, that's a lot of checks to process, all the way from down to thirty, forty dollars a check, all the way up to, to our normal checks. Now that you approved the audit, we're doing all of our year-end compliance filing, and that will completely finally wrap up two thousand and twenty-two. And we are working on, um, you'll see it soon, a not, an update to our non-tax revenue plan, which is something we do about every five years or so, we're doing it a little bit early, uh, in conjunction with the update of the master plan. And that's all I have.
Thank you so much, Dr. Stange, for the audit, everything else, really great things for maybe?
Yes, thank you.
Uh, good evening, listeners. First off, I'm pleased to announce that Springbrook officially opened last week for play on June fifteenth, um, after a very well-attended and tested, uh, recutting event the previous night. Currently, SAP is looking at a number of tee times right now, um, to allow the new turf, a little bit of time that will continue to mature. Right now, Springbrook is allowing, on average, about a hundred, two hundred fifty rounds per day, uh, which is about fifty percent of our normal. Conditions overall, of course, are very good. Uh, the eighteen greens are in perfect shape, uh, majority of the fairway turf is in very excellent condition. Right now, fourteen of the eighteen tees are open and in use, uh, we expect two more to be available next week, and then the final two likely the week after. The concern right now, um, turf-wise, is some of the surrounding areas outside of the reach of our irrigation, um, we still have some of these areas with a little bit of turf, um, SAP has been putting in an incredible amount of time and effort the past months, preparing the golf course to open, but obviously, the conditions that we're dealing with, with the drought, have made it very difficult for us to grow anything in some of those areas. It's very labor-intensive for us to pull hose and do other things, to try to get water to some of these areas, but we're doing the best we can, even the areas that we do have the irrigation reach to, uh, have been a struggle to try to manage through the past couple of months with this weather. While we are looking at the tee times, uh, we've offered our leads, our permanent tee times, the opportunity to come back to Springbrook, and I have to say, almost are back now. On our opening weekend, uh, over ninety percent of our permanent tee times, uh, played at Springbrook, and looking at this, uh, weekend coming up, uh, the majority are going to feedback with maybe two or three content to continue to play over at Naperville Brook as, uh, conditions continue to improve at Springbrook. Uh, feedback on the changes and updates of the golf course has been very positive overall. We've heard very good things about the new bunkers and tees, which was great because it was two of many areas that our customers had told us that we needed to update and improve. They appreciate the changes of the design of the golf course, uh, changes to increase the playability and maintain the challenge, that's gone over very well. We have heard concern about the additions of some of the areas seen late last year, and some of the areas that are on the outside of the irrigation, but overall, the golfers are excited with the changes. They understand, uh, what we've been dealing with, the conditions are, you know, somewhat due to the weather, but they understand also this is not a finished product. We expect to continue to see improved conditions as the year goes on, and through the rest of season, getting better every day. We're going to continue to monitor the golf course, uh, and we will plan to slowly open and increase the number of available tee times as long as the course continues to respond positively to, uh, the use. Man, right now, for tee times at both golf courses is very high, as we've talked about in the past. So we're working very hard to get Springbrook fully available as soon as possible, but overall, it's been great to see the golfers back on the golf course, uh, no issue with the golfers on the course, since Springbrook has handled the place so far very well, and it's been just, uh, very kind of celebratory to see everybody back out there. Now, while the dry weather hasn't done anything good for us, uh, growing wise, uh, over another side of town, it's really, uh, helped us, uh, push an incredible amount of rounds in Naperville. Last month in May, we saw over seventy-four hundred rounds in Naperville, which is almost a fifty percent increase of what our average is for May. And while those are phenomenal numbers, Naperville right now in June is currently tracking surpassed those numbers that we saw in, in May, so it just keeps kind of going here. And along with that, anything outside right now is driving range use, revenue from that is well above our budget, so those are all good. And looking at some of other things going on right now, this is our peak time for our programs at both golf courses, especially our junior programs. All our programs are showing very strong participation, with almost all programs full or nearly full. Our professional staff right now is very busy with, uh, our junior camps, clinics, and our leads, with nearly four hundred junior golfers ages five to seventeen participating in our programs this month at both golf courses. And while we're at the summit for junior golfers, uh, also mentioned that we, uh, have our Naperville Junior Amateur Championship coming up next month, July tenth of Naperville. We expect probably, we're about to a hundred and twenty golfers between ages nine and seventeen years old, and they'll get to compete against their peers in flights based on age and gender, so some of the best golfers in Naperville will probably be expected next month over at Naperville. Well, I have a good answer to your question.
President Gibson, just, just real quick, I just want to, to give a shout out to Kevin and the, the Springbrook community team. They put in a tremendous amount of work, uh, over the past couple of months to get the launch ready. Uh, certainly, the weather conditions have now been very favorable for, for curling turf and trying to reel the course, and, uh, their work really has paid off, so wanted to say thank you. to reel the course, and their work really has paid off, so wanted to say thank you.
Actually, it kind of fun last week, I overheard conversations out like at the pool and out about Springbrook and people who have already golfed it and everything, and overheard, it's been really great. Talking, play by play of how the bowls have changed, and you know, which trees are the same, it's been really cool, it's been enthusiasm.
Yeah, it's been fun seeing golfers back out there, it's really been a pleasure talking a little bit about the conditions and the changes we've made.
Thank you. That was human resources.
This evening, I wanted to take the opportunity to provide overview of the district's section of May efforts. Your upper grade, there are pretty challenges and strategies during department updates like this. Just as important as getting the right individuals into our organization and retaining them is planning for their inevitable departure. Employee turnover is often disruptive to one-place productivity, costing results to look direct and figure out costs, and it negatively impact the level of customer service and quality facilities and programs provided to our customers' residents. When full-time position vacancies occur, the district strives to fill those positions from a standpoint feasible. Staff must be developed professionally, accepting of new responsibilities and engaged to be prepared to cover vacancies at a temporary basis or to move into new roles within our organization. Park's experienced the domino effect of staff promotions in two thousand and twenty, two thousand and twenty-one, started with just a couple retirees in key positions, which punctuated having the value of having. H L talent has developed and want to take on new roles within the organization. The district has made successful planning and staff development a priority across the district, including making it a goal within our two thousand and twenty-three to two thousand and twenty-five stretch to do. I recently met with all department staff in the recreation department that are either superintendent or manager level. Each were asked a series of questions about job satisfaction and professional goals. Many of the meetings were nearly an hour and a half long, and I did not plan for that, and it was, they were very good meetings. It wasn't situations like, oh, we've got Katie's year, we're not doing our trip, and there was really great feedback that was received during those meetings. As a result, our board has been compliant, provided to Director Coats, she and I are in the midst of reviewing the results together. The timing of the process has worked out really well, as it allows for budgeting for professional development opportunities when we begin the two thousand and twenty-four budget process. Based on how well the process went within the department, this is a format that I'm looking to replicate with other departments, and also do it at recurring phases, so taking years off when we do employee engagement surveys. And this is in addition to the annual report that I compiled that is a retirement assessment, where it looks at individuals' ages and where they are as far as vesting with their pension program, and Department Director's been receiving that annually since two thousand and eleven. Questions on that separate, sorry if you ask?
Is the wage compression issue getting better or going on in our direction?
You know, actually, compensation that can come up a whole lot in this, except when we're talking about the part-time staff that they hire. We are planning to do a two thousand and twenty-four compensation program analysis again, and that's when we'll take a look at not only where our full-time positions are, but then the compression that's coming up for the nine and those part-time, part-time thirty-plus positions, so it's, that's a big test match.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Good evening, commissioners. Just a few updates from IT. At the start of June, we got to all settle together, start working for a couple of weeks out of conference room at the admin while the IT offices were undergoing renovations. That's, I completed successfully, and it's really great to have a screwed-up home for our day-to-day operations. Along with that, we've been going through, you know, now into the swing of summer, got through current opening, and within IT, now we're starting to get back on track with life cycle of old machines, taking care of updates across the district. Along with that, evaluating, evaluating additional security updates around the district. Then you now will actually be going out tomorrow to staff about some adjustments to the so exciting topic of stamp filtering that everyone loves, with the change that we're implementing to start next week, that will hopefully make it easier for people to know where to go if something does get blocked when it's supposed to, blocking more of the things it should be, while getting back teamwork and control of the whole process. So that's kind of where our general focus is, happy to get any questions.
Thank you. Staff, may I mark my communication?
Evening commissioners, I have a few updates for you tonight. First of all, July is National Park and Recreation Month through N L P A, and we're going to really take this opportunity to weave in a month-long campaign comprised of various social, web, digital media assets to promote this, and really talk about how the local Park District is an benefit to Naperville residents. Just earlier this week, I taped the second Parket Show for the six-three-oh show that N C T V does on a monthly basis, and we're committed to four episodes this year. So I was over at Naperville talking to head of golf from Tim Dunn, and we talked about golf etiquette, which is kind of a very timely discussion, knowing that we've been talking about sportsmanship a lot, it's very much related, and that episode will air in July, you can see that online on N C T V, and we'll also share it through our local district channels. And then last week, just a reminder that we have a couple of rubber cuttings coming up. We've got Tallgrass Lakes Park on June twenty-seventh at five p.m., and also the brand-new Naperville County Park on Tuesday, July eleventh at five p.m. Any questions?
Thank you. Next, we have Park Police.
Good evening, officers. Just going to briefly, our police operations over the summer, I don't know if you realize it, but we typically have an officer working every day from eight a.m. to midnight for the entire summer. I work full-time with two sergeants, and between the three of us, there's typically one of us every day, Monday through Friday, from eight to four. Second officer is working eight to six, and then the third sergeant, third full-time officer, typically begins at two p.m. and works till ten or a minute. In addition to us working during the day, I have two park service officers assigned to the beach each day from twelve-thirty to eight-thirty. I have an additional two park service officers assigned to the electric bikes from two-thirty in the evening till eight-thirty. Their focus typically begins on the riverwalk, but they've been really started to try and be a presence on our seventy-seven-ish miles of bike trails within the district, literally from one end of town to the other while they're on. In the evening, we're typically joined by the part-time officers, starting at six and five. My goal each night is to have at least three of us working, so that we have a north park, a center park, and a south park. And on the weekends, we try to get up to four. But it's not uncommon for me to take off during the week and work a special event weekend, if that's what we need. We continue to work very closely with the city regarding special events, which are going to happen almost every weekend now. So we work very closely with them to manage the logistics associated with them, and we continue our year-round training with the Naperville Police Department.
Thank you.
Hello again. By the end of June, Park's support of springtime athletics programming has begun to wind down. The shift allowed staff to focus on other activities. You probably see staff on molten swimming, a whole lot of watering, a lot of landscape bed maintenance right now, and basically moving. Our collaborative efforts on projects with volunteers continues to remain very strong, and staff also uses many summer breaks in the programming season to complete several small in-house projects. Our crews continue to support special events, other activities such as the conservation parks, kite bus recently, the children's lunchtime entertainment shows, and our upcoming summer baseball, softball, lacrosse, at the turn of the season. Summer meetings regarding the Naperville Salute and Community Firework Show took place recently, which we're each expected to begin next week with the hot, dry weather and the slowdown of the grass. We've asked our mowing tractor to spot-check their assigned parks over the next week prior to the July Fourth holiday, and then take the next week off. Our contract does allow for us to then to skip weeks, possibly tack on later on at the end of the contract, or just save that week's worth of mowing. Given the approval of an additional vehicle this evening, I did want to provide a quick update on everybody's favorite topic on our free sample replacement plan. As a quick refresher, there were several vehicles that were being swapped from our two thousand and twenty-two and two thousand and twenty-three replacement lists due to supply issues, so some of the lists that have been published might not be entirely accurate at this point. Thanks to some creative thinking by our Park District team and the continued flexibility of our board, we have already secured, are in the process of taking delivery of five new trucks this year. Two vehicles, a Ford Escape hybrid and an F three-fifty dump truck are on order, but neither have any build or delivery dates passed on to us up to this point. If you'll recall last November, I was able to share that we had planned on ordering seven super duty trucks for two thousand and twenty-three via Ford's government pricing program, and for a lot of us just had one slot. Well, that also happens to be the F three-fifty dump truck, and we have no information on it up to this point this year. It's also possible that these orders will not be fulfilled at all, or as we've seen before, just on my cams. Four trucks do remain on our original two thousand and twenty-three replacement list plan, two hybrid Ford Mavericks, and two F two-fifty pickup trucks. At this point, there are no known manufacturer ordering windows available or options through our purchasing networks, and staff will continue to monitor our various options we can find out out of the dealership lots. Several pieces of equipment also appear on the two thousand and twenty-three list, though also with availability issues. Typically, we're able to present a planned purchase list for the upcoming year's budget and adhere to it pretty closely. These last couple of years have just made that extremely difficult. While some of these items have already and continue to change out of necessity on our lists, we'll continue to work within the framework of our approved two thousand and twenty-three budget and our two thousand and twenty-three and two thousand and twenty-four replacement lists. The good news is we are nearing the end, as we have been able to secure several items that will be added to this. And just an update on a topic that I shared last week, the Park District's membership application to the B twenty club of Illinois was accepted late last week. We're excited to officially become a member, and I look for more information about that to be posted soon. Any questions?
Tim, with regard to irrigation and this drought, how do we decide how much the water is, is it a water bill issue, or it's a budget issue, or is it a manpower issue, or equipment issue, or how do we decide how much water we're going to push out there?
There are a lot of different factors depending on the site that going to it. At certain sites, we are obligated to adhere to the city's, even on watering days if we're using the city water. There are some caveats to that rule, but we'll water as much as we can. Typically, the manufacturers of the irrigation that have to be used will recommend about an inch of water per week. A lot of that is playing catch-up, is sometimes depending on the size of the field, the capacity of our pumps, you know, we have a hard time of giving that one inch out per week if we're limited by the number of days. Other sites like Commissioners Park or Frontier Park, we're not using city water, and we have a limit on flexibility in the timing and the amount of days that we water, so it cannot stay able to deal better. But yes, definitely, you know, looking towards the tournament season and knowing that we've got several games coming up, high-profile games, we'll look to, you know, pump as much water as we can on those sites, just to make sure we can keep things safe and clear.
President Gibson, just on the drought topic, one of the things that we did this past week in working with Sam and her team, and Kevin and Tim and Eric, was put together a series of E B Qs, information about just what changes with Park District when we're in this type of drought, and how we go about watering different locations within the community. So that's now posted on our website, just to provide the community with some additional information as to what to expect during the summer.
Great, yeah, please be proactive.
Thank you. I have two updates to report this evening. The first one relates to an intergovernmental agreement between Naperville Park District and the County D B, for the intergovernmental cooperation utilization of available resources for partnership projects. On May twenty-fourth, staff met with DuPage County Stonewater Management Staff and DuPage County Board Member Don Disar to discuss county assistance with upcoming Naperville Park District Stonewater projects. DuPage County staff shared their interest in working with the Park District to assist with several upcoming projects. Within the county, some of the projects that we shared with county staff include the riverwalks, as well as Brightbridge Park along the shoreline, a restoration work. As next steps, the intent is to prepare an intergovernmental agreement between the Naperville Park District and DuPage County with the goal of presenting an I T A to respective Park District and county boards at future meetings. We will provide a draft of the I T A once it's ready for review, which is slated for this summer. And the second update is, as mentioned earlier this evening, the two thousand and twenty-four capital projects open house event, something we're very excited about. This is something we conducted a year as part of our communication plan, extensive outreach to the community, and in our process, we've reached out to the residents the year before. So essentially, we're looking at improvements next year for two thousand and twenty-four, we're asking them this year what they think about the improvements. To give you some ideas of what we're thinking of the partners this year, there are large-scale projects planned to be implemented next year in two thousand and twenty-four, includes the Arbor Way Playground renovation, Arrowhead Park Playground, ball field and basketball court renovations, Brightbridge Park Contraire and shoreline restoration, Central Park Playground renovation, Club Greenway shoreline restoration, Frontier Sports Complex Playground renovation, this is the central playground at Frontier Sports Complex, Oak Ridge Parkway Playground renovation, Rondory Community Yardlot parking lot, race planning minutes and drainage improvements. Currently, we have a contract for AMI Services for the engineering portion of the purple papers for this parking lot. Southwood Park Playground renovation, Springfield Park Playground renovation, ball field backstop renovations, Stanford Metals shoreline restoration, and then Wine and Drink Park, the playground renovation, and the basketball court development we discussed this evening. So it's quite a large list, and we're very excited about it, and we just want to let you know we're looking to roll it out July nineteenth through August second. As part of the process, the info we receive will capture all that. As soon as residents reach out to us, we respond back to email, we provide to the board those email correspondence and all the other information that you have, and then that information assists us in developing project plans and cost estimates that are appropriate in our two thousand and twenty-four capital.
Will we be putting physical signs at some of those locations?
Yes, so as part of our extensive period outreach and education plan, we'll have press releases and updates on the website, we will have signs. Due this year, we're looking at sort of like banners identifying what we may add exactly what been permitted. So like a playground renovation, we'll say playground renovation, and then there will be like a Q R toward contact information, and then people will participate in that process.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Finally, we have a briefing.
Preparations are underway to open the Carolina Visitor Center for Tours, starting on Friday, July seventh. After a couple of years of the under construction, we are very excited to get back to our own tour schedule. Our weekly Carolina recitals will also begin on July eighth, with the Saturdays and Sundays of concert. Pebble Court continues to do well. By combining the cafe operation and the Pebble operation, we have increased foot traffic inside the building, which has doubled the food and beverage sales compared to last year at the same time, so a very positive change. We continue to monitor the overall beach membership and daily cash sales. As of today, we are approximately five percent higher than daily cash sales, three percent lower than last year, but if you combine the two, we're really close overall. Over the last few years, the district has been able to enhance the visitor's experience to a few of our natural park areas with the addition of mobile tours. The tours have included an audio tour of McNills Park, a walk through the Sit Woods, and the opportunity to navigate through a couple of scamper hunts. And just recently, we approached the Conservation Foundation about collaborating, collaborating on another possible mobile tour, which will be the Forest Therapy Walks. We are excited about this opportunity and hope to bring it to the district sometime this year. For those of you who are in For those of you who are not familiar with our mobile tours, they can be accessed through our website on the Macknells Nature Center page. And last but not least, I have a fun one for you, my most important update, is the addition of a new product that I've got, the Centennial Grill. We are now selling icee's. The icee is more of a slushy treat instead of the shaped ice. And since bringing the icee on as of June sixteen, we have sold fifty-one percent more of those than the icee, than the, um, shaped ice. So it also has helped with the lines, the lines have moved much faster because we're able to move quicker with the icee. So. Anything else? Any questions?
Thank you. The next regular meeting of the park tour commissioners will be July thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-three, at seven p.m. Do you have executive session this evening?
Move to adjourn to executive session to discuss land acquisition for section two C five.
Seven. Roll call, please.
President Rocking?
Yes.
Ms. Thompson?
Yes.
Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
Ms. Jess? Ms. Jen?
Yes.
Ms. Russell?
Yes.
President Gibson?
Yes.